I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order for the villages Shorewood on August the 14th in the year 2012. The invocation tonight be given by Pastor Justin Stroud from the Grace Bible Church. Pastor?
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for a beautiful night like tonight and God, we thank you for these leaders and this town that you've given them to govern. God, we pray for tonight and for what's going to go on and the decisions that will be made. And God, we pray for your blessing over that and we pray for just discernment and wisdom and perspective for these leaders. God, we pray that tonight would be for your glory and we thank you for the opportunity and we just pray that this would be glorifying to you and we pray all this in your holy and awesome name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Julie Roelkoff, please.
Anderson?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
FitzGerald?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
I'd like to move on tonight to citizens. Are there any citizens that wish to address the village board? If not, we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of approval of accounts payable on the amount of $405,573.43. Also approval of a payment in the amount of $33,792.39 to Martin Wayland Office Solutions for the workspace remodeling. If any of yous haven't seen it, you need to look downstairs. It looks really good and the reports from our employees that are behind those windows say that the flow of work has improved vastly. Not only that, their necks are not so sore from jerking around trying to see who's at the window, so. And you can see it, that it works. Number three, approval of a payment in the amount of $56,160 to Max Court Incorporated for elevated tank maintenance completed on the Black Road Water Tower. And then finally, approval of a payment in the amount of $69,400 to Emerald Slate Services for the Fields of Shorewood Unit 1 and 2 detention pond restoration. That also, if you haven't been up around that area, you might want to do that because the ponds look really good and the neighborhood is really happy that that happened because they were living in a jungle, so. At any rate, are there any items on tonight's consent agenda trustee would like removed or further review?
Dan, do you want that I-55?
Yes, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that was, I was going to mention that, what page was that?
It's for $385.
Yeah, page, where is that, page 12 at the top, yeah.
I want to vote on that one, Shepard.
Actually, we weren't, okay, in the accounts payable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I-55 auto salvaged for three, well, there's two invoices totaling 385.
Yeah, what page was that on?
Well, I think it was 12.
I didn't write the page number down, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 12 at the top. It's three, I think three invoices.
Dan, in the future, maybe we'll just put that off separately so you don't have to ask for that when it comes up.
I don't know, can we do that, David, I know?
You're saying, put it in a separate item?
Right.
No, we do it every, usually we do that every other month.
Yeah, occasionally.
Okay, any other issues on tonight's consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Second. Julie Roelkoff, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
FitzGerald?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Consent agenda stands approved, I'll move to...
Mayor, I'd just like to make a real fast comment. The Black Road Water Tower looks brand new, it's gorgeous compared to how dirty it had been and I'm sure everybody's noticed. So that was money well invested for how many years it's been there? That's all I wanted to comment on.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the three invoices for I-55 salvage to be approved.
I'll move.
Second.
Julie Roelkoff, please.
Anderson?
Pass.
Brockman?
Yes.
FitzGerald?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Invoices stand approved. We'll move on to reports and communications. Julie, any communications for the board?
I have any, sir.
Ah, I got it. Couple of items report on the festival, okay? I was here on Saturday of the festival, I missed the Sunday, sorry, I missed the parade and that, but on Saturday, as we all know, a storm blew through in the afternoon. I've been getting nothing but compliments as to how the police department in the villages Shorewood made the call and then evacuated the festival grounds prior to the storm, prior to 70 mile an hour winds hitting and starting to rip things apart, trying to lift the major tent out of the ground, okay? Because I personally saw that after the storm blew through. So it was a job well done by our public works group, by the police department, the fire and the chamber employees or volunteers to get the people out of that area expediently and to do it in a professional manner that was recognized by many. And when I'm talking many, I'm talking 25 contacts of telephone calls and emails from people. That's a lot. That's a lot of people calling up to tell us what a good job these people did. So again, chief, thank you, thank you personally, but also all your troops, Public Works, make sure that everybody hears it, they did a great job. You can't ever take somebody being injured back, but you can always put the festival back up and running, which got done pretty expedient, so that was good. On Monday, Tom Cross came to the village hall and presented a voluntary group award to the Shorewood Hugs Organization for work done in our community by ladies of hugs, they raise money and then they grant wishes to families and children who need to have some, a little bit of help. It was a nice morning, we took pictures and it was a nice plaque presented. Tom really recognized that this is an organization that worked hard, they work hard in the community and they do a great job. They also donate money to the village from their chocolate ball that they have here at the village. So again, another congratulations to an organization that's well run and they do good in the community. And today, Tom, or today Roger, Sue and I met with Eller's Public Financial Service, John Miller, I think a lot of you know him, he's our bond agent. We met in order to try to find out what's out there, rates and things for bonding. What it is, is that Baxter and Woodman are putting together, well, public, I should say our public works department and committee put together a five-year plan to look out of the things, the major items that are going to be needed in the sewer and water area. Those items are very expensive. What we did was we looked at what was going to be needed and it comes out to about $8 million. So that's something that we can bind out for, so we called in the bond agents to let us know what's out there and what's available and at what rates and what they would suggest. They put together, they are putting together a plan, they're going to work with Baxter and Woodman and come up with the best plan. If we backload the bond or if the board decides not to go that way, we'll find that out. What I'd like to propose is that we have a meeting of the whole in the first part of September and what I'm proposing, if you guys got your calendars, okay, the date that I looked at that most obviously just stood out was September the 4th and I'll tell you why, we need to get this done in a relative quick time period. If we're going to start construction, if the board believes that we should start construction next spring, we need to be presenting, presenting the ordinance in order to go after the bonds and we need to do that within the next couple of months. That'll be the timeframe that we need to start near the end of September or the beginning of October in order to have the funds available to be able to go out to bid on any one of the projects, so. At any rate, that's, does, can everybody make September the 4th for a meeting of the whole?
What's Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday, yeah.
An off Tuesday.
First Tuesday in September.
Day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Dan, you said you won't be here?
No, I said that's an off Tuesday.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay, well, if anybody has a problem, please get to me, tell me that there's a major problem with September the 4th and we'll do that at 7:00, 7:00 PM.
And Mayor, if there's any possibility of getting any material, you know, informational material that we're going to need to look at ahead of time so we're prepared for, you know, questions and all that, if we could get that as far in advance as possible.
And there is. So Baxter and Woodman, I think, will be finalizing their plan, their part of it, within the next week or two. If we get them to tie in with the bonding agent so that they can look at some other issues and monitor part of it, then should be able to get the board a packet seven, eight days ahead, okay? We'll work on that. That's the end of my report, okay? Roger, anything to add to that?
You covered it.
No, I could, I kind of had a little bit in my packet or that was on my report for tonight, but I just, there is, Baxter and Woodman did a very good job, Steve, you were there, they did a nice job on presenting that. It gives you everything you need, the numbers, I think you, it might be a little shocking at first, but after you go through the whole thing, it's actually not too bad, it's actually good. It's not as bad as what it looks at the beginning, after everything goes up and down and you go through the whole thing, it looks good, so. You know, they did a lot of work to it, it'll be, it's pretty easy to understand.
Can they share that presentation, Dan?
What's that?
Can Baxter and Woodman share that with everybody?
They were going to, yes.
Everybody was invited to that meeting.
Everybody was invited to the meeting, they...
No, but for those that didn't, weren't able to attend the meeting?
They're cleaning it up and everybody's going to get it, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're working on now, is to get them to clean it up.
Oh, okay, so that'll be out in the packet then, the week ahead of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If I remember, one thing, if I remember correctly, they had three options and they're going to present those, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to go through it, Baxter and Woodman's going to be there and they're going to present everything, just like they did to us and everybody get a crack at it and it's, they did a real good job, so it's really easy to work with and understand, so.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to tonight's order business. This is item number one, consideration for approval of the annual police pension report. Trustee Grant and Finance Director Sue Byrd.
Yeah, Sue's an official member of the pension board, so she's going to discuss the report that they put together for you guys.
Basically, what you have before you is the annual report that is required that the pension board give to the village board. It's required by law, some of the highlights of the pension board, you in fact have three items, you have the pension report, you have a copy of their revised investment policy and the third thing was more or less for your information, the Commission on Government Forecasting and Accountability did a study regarding combining police and fire pensions for the state of Illinois and it was an interesting read, so I presented it to you because as one of the requirements for the government, they had to prepare this report. Highlights for the Shorewood Police Pension is now, it's now at 8.3 million. The tax levy recommended for 2012 is actually going to go down a little bit for the first time and the 2011 levy was 554,000. The actuarial valuation for this year is 530, so it's actually recommended to go down. We currently have four retired members who are drawing pensions. The funded ratio went up this year to 77%, that's the highest it's ever been up to, so it's going right, you know, obviously we did have a dip back in 2008, '09, but it's on its way back up. Currently, between the police pension and IMRF, we are still at 70%, 76% of our tax levy goes to pensions between IMRF and the police. The main thing that has changed...
76% of the villages portion.
Of the villages portion of the tax levy, excuse me, clarify that, so. The major change for the police pension this year was that they were able to invest in corporate bonds and that is why the revised investment policy, they had to change the investment policy to allow that. There are obviously certain strict regulations as to the quality of the bonds, but those are all in the bylaws. If there are any questions, I could try and answer them, otherwise...
Can you explain how they compute or in a layman's, in a layman's sort of way, how they computer calculate the levy, because if we're, I know we're going up in terms of percentage funded, but if we're still below 100, that'd be the ideal, right? So why would we lower the levy?
Well, there's been some changes, the state of Illinois changed the actuarial methodology where you, in low, for younger force, you pay less, as they get older, you pay more. So they changed that methodology of the actuary and then there's also a discrepancy, Government Accounting Standards Board says it has to be 100% funded, now the state of Illinois says 90% funded.
What's the deadline for that? Usually they have a 15-year, 20-year deadline.
It's several years out.
You know, I believe it's a floating 30.
Is it that far?
Yeah, for the 90%, so that in the next 30 years, you're supposed to have it at 90%.
Yeah.
What is it projected that the new levy, if it's, I don't know if they did that, they might have, but I missed it, what is it projected that the next year funded liability would be based on the new levy?
The liabilities? I don't have that right here with me, the levy would go down a little bit to 530,000 compared to 554 and that again is based on, the rate of return they got this last year was 6.73, just slightly under the assumed rate of 7%, but we had been earning some, you know, a year before, we earned 10%, a year before that, 16, you know, and the year before that was 2000.
I'm just trying to reconcile lower levy with a need for higher funded liability, that's all.
Yeah, and again, should we start expanding the force again or, you know, whatever, we would have to probably adjust that levy back up.
And we usually tend to keep our pension fund a little higher than most towns and I remember in the past, we've been at 72 and 73% compared to other communities and so we're up at 77 and I tend, I take it we're still up above most communities.
We are doing quite well compared to some of the surrounding communities. The other thing though, that you have to realize is that they also changed the tiers as far as, you know, what the particular new officers get, will be getting, so that has changed the calculation too.
That's new ones hired now, not...
Anyone hired after January 1, I think 2011 it was, I believe?
Okay, the same as with IMRF.
So there was that and then also, as far as us making the contribution, the village has always made the required or recommended contribution, starting in, I think, 2014, 15 and 16, it will be phased in that villages are required to, just like it is with IMRF. So that is one of the other things.
That's not the new, that's not the new for us, so we'll be okay.
No, because we've always done it.
Yes.
Yeah, right, everything's got to be in context, we've always, we've never missed a payment, we've always funded it fully as actuarially required, I just wanted to make sure we weren't sliding backwards in terms of the, you know, funded liability.
We do whatever the actuary will recommend, state of Illinois will have its own actuary within the next year and it will be interesting to see what they tell us versus the private one, because always before the private one is, I think, a much better, more reliable one. There are any other questions? That's the report for the year then.
Thanks, Sue.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual police pension report. No second. Julie, Roelkoff, please.
Brockman?
Yes.
FitzGerald?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
The annual police pension report's been approved, we'll move on to agenda item number two, consideration for approval of a memo of understanding with the American Red Cross for shelter plans, Chief Kleeman.
Good evening, most of you know, we've never had to open a shelter here in Shorewood and hopefully we don't ever have to, but through the planning over the last couple of years, we have a shelter plan, but quite frankly, we're compromised in town by the ability to provide long-term shelter because we have no shower facilities. The also, the American Red Cross, the way they did business in the past, their model has changed, so they've approached us as many other, they have other communities, they want to enter into a memorandum of understanding with us, providing for mutual aid cooperation and planning, pre-positioning of assets, training, and then they will assist us and we will in turn, as we are able to do, assist them in operating shelters in nearby municipalities should the need arise. So I recommend that this is a good arrangement for the village, we'll get all the assets that they have to provide us, plus our personnel that will be participating in this through the EMA program, will be able to practice their craft by going elsewhere if the need arises and we'll be able to mutually benefit.
Chief, I think it's a good idea, what do you mean by pre-positioning of assets though? If you can clarify that.
They have trailers that they, all throughout the northeast Chicagoland area, they have like 38 or 42 trailers now, so as municipalities enter into agreements, they pre-position trailers with enough equipment for 72 hours for 150 people, cots, blankets, water, you know, dry meals, stuff like that and then obviously our pre-positioning, if we may or may not have a trailer here, we probably won't because I don't have a fenced-in lot to pre-position one to secure it, but also the arrangements that we make with certain facilities in town for a short-term shelter or if we needed one for in excess of 48 hours, we'd be looking into Joliet or Plainfield that, probably a gymnasium with shower facilities to establish a shelter.
The assets aren't, they're not committed 100% to Shorewood.
They are not.
They're positioned in the area and then wherever the greatest need is.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure of.
So they can expedite them in a hurry, is that their...
Correct. They claim that within six hours, they can have a shelter open anywhere in the Chicagoland area.
And the reason you need to consider that is because in a natural disaster, you may not be able to get the equipment here because of the impassibility of roads and things like that, so they need to be pre-possessed, yeah. Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? If not, I'll entertain...
Rick, I've got a question. I got, in my packet was the approval of the resolution, but the memo of understanding, is that just part of this? Because there was no separate sheet with a memo.
There are two separate things, do you have the one for the Red Cross or the one for the Greater Will County Emergency Services Mutual Aid Association?
Yeah, that one.
That's the next item.
Right, but I don't have the one with the Red Cross.
I didn't get it either, I asked one for a copy. We got two of the one instead of one each. We didn't get the...
I don't think we got the Red Cross.
No, we didn't.
They were duplicates of the same thing, is what I got anyway.
Has our attorney looked at the agreement? Is he okay with it?
He has.
Okay.
I've got it on the memo I sent, I don't know.
No, I just didn't get it in our packet.
Cover letter looks like this.
See this?
Paper, I guess?
Yeah, no, didn't get that.
We got it.
I can email it to everybody. Mr. Silverman has reviewed it often.
That's fine, I'll move to approve the memo of understanding.
Second.
Hey, Julie Roelkoff, please.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get the second.
Me.
It's a Steve, thanks Steve. Sorry. FitzGerald?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Okay, chief, moving on to item number three, consideration for approval of a resolution authorizing a mutual aid agreement with the Greater Will County Emergency Services Mutual Aid Association.
Okay, with the fire departments, they have their mutual aid network, the police has their mutual aid network, Public Works... Public Works has their mutual aid network. Same thing with the emergency services groups in the area. Everyone in Will County is invited to participate if they have an EMA or an ESDA group. The benefit to this is we will have at our disposal the opportunity to mutually share resources, whether they be vehicles, equipment, or personnel, mutual aid for pre-planned events as well as calamities should they arise. Also, if there's training or other meeting, learning opportunities available. We've already invited people here. When I did a traffic control class with Lamont and the New Lennox came and sent personnel, so we'll be able to participate in training opportunities, you know, elsewhere. So I recommend that we enter into this agreement.
This is, this, Will County's in this, too, aren't they?
This is Will County.
This is Will County.
This is Will County.
I mean, Will County Sheriff's in it and all that, right?
There are county assets. Harold Dameron and the EMA people participate.
Because the county has really, they have a lot of good stuff down there as far as disaster goes, you know?
Correct, correct. And all that's made available, but anyway, they just come and support the Mutual Aid
Motion to approve. Second.
Julie Roelkall, please.
Grant?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
And item number three stands approved. Thank you, chief. We'll move on to committee reports. Trustee Dan Anderson, Public Works Committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, the MFT for what's been going on in the last three weeks. They've got the curb in, the binder's down and they're putting the final surfaces on the streets now. The dirt work's all done behind the curb and the sod will go in after September 15th. So the people that are, have their curbs torn up and, you know, the dirt's there, it will get sotted, but it won't go, the sod won't go until after September 15th due to the, you know, better chance of cooler weather and rain to help that catch hold, the sod. The Black Road and River intersection, that, the light intersection, we're wait, still waiting on the streets, poles, aluminum poles come in, they're still not in. The water ban continues, not banned, but the water limitations is odd and even, 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 A.M. and 6:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. Odd and even based on your address, that's still continuing. We did get a notification, the board all got a notification of a West Nile virus, mosquito was found here in town about two or three weeks ago. And it did make the radio this morning, too, on VOL. It was on, you know, Shorewood and Plainfield, I think Joliet, there's about five or six other communities all had mosquitoes with the West Nile virus. And we got notified about three weeks ago, two weeks maybe, but we did, we went out and did a couple extra sprays since that email went out. We hired the company that sprays and they've done two since then to help stop that problem with the mosquitoes. Emerald Ash Borer, their guys are out working on those trees again. They kind of slowed up a little bit over the summer because it was so hot. With the heat, the trees aren't taking the water up or fluid up and that's how that gets into the trees to fight the borer. So they're back on the south end of town, working on those trees. And the other thing is, we just had a WestCon meeting that was supposed to be Thursday night, but that's been canceled and I think we're going to have it in the next couple, three weeks, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gary Fitzgerald, Planning and Zoning Commission.
No report tonight.
Trustee Dan Grant, Finance and Budget.
Yeah, I stuck a, excuse me, I stuck a memo from Sue in front of everybody tonight. It wasn't on the agenda. Gary and I had been talking about this issue and Sue and I, you know, the news about the financial incident up in Dixon, Illinois. Late last year, we wanted to have our auditors look at our controls we have in place to reassure everybody that what happened in Dixon can't happen here. So Sue talked to the auditors, put together this memo and explains why, you know, our policies and procedures are in place and how they prevent such fraud. So that's what this memo is. If anybody else needs a copy, just let me know. That's all.
Did I get a copy of that memo?
Oh, it should be right in front of you. Yeah, it's right there. That's all.
Trustee Steve Brockman, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Only report I have is our next meeting will be the fourth Thursday in September. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Sadie Swartz, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Rick. I just want everybody to know the fall brochure should be received in your mailbox by the end of next week. And as we're winding down the last month of our free concerts and movies in the park, the last ones we have, this Thursday, August 16th, will be Shin Dig. And the advertisement says the grooviest music of the '60s. Thursday, August 23rd, the movie in the park will be Ghostbusters. And Thursday, August 30th, the concert in the park will feature living proof band hits from the '60s and '70s. And the starting times, again, concerts start at 6:30 to 8:30. And dusk is getting considerably earlier, so the movies will probably be starting, you know, 8:15 to 8:30, depending on if the sun's out that day. That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Trustee McDonald, anything from you?
Other than I would like to have all our residents be aware, starting next week, most of the schools will be going back into school to, please watch and drive carefully and watch for bus stops and the kids out there waiting for the stops. That's all I...
Okay. Entertain the most, two adjournments.
Fitzgerald.
Second.
Julie Roelkall, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Something wrong with school stuff.